And on budget, it helps to inform the public of plans and receive feedback. So gives them an opportunity to be bought in from the very beginning of the process, because they're able to share their feedback before a final investment decision is made. And then again, it's a tool for leadership to use for final decisions. And then also the feasibility study will create the path to funding as well through the various different infrastructure programs that are available, both federally and provincially. ICIP is one of those, Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. So that's an option. We'll also scope out what funding options are available for this expansion as part of the feasibility study as well. Okay, next slide. Pause, dramatic pause. Sorry about that. So we thought we'd just go through a number of options that we generally use around engagement. So of course, the online surveys to make sure you reach as many people as possible. We have a really unique tool that we use that provides a lot of background analytics to kind of break it down to demographics, you know, where and where they live. They can map that out. So that's a really good tool. Public presentations and facilitated Q and A forums and focus groups. Again, we'll do this all within with planning with your team. Then we gather and analyze the feedback. We share results. Big part of it is communicating with the community of the results of their feedback and making sure that the community has an opportunity to see what's being said. So it doesn't feel like it's happening behind closed doors in a transparent and open process. Then we would consult with any other stakeholders and interested parties, other partnerships that you might want to look at. And then of course, the final press release, public relations and gathering additional feedback. So those are just some of the processes in the engagement process that we'll use. And like I said, I understand that there's a number of community meetings and gatherings already that will maximize the opportunity to be able to get people engaged on the project. And I think the seniors facility, I think we're planning to do a visit there with the smaller focus groups. And so just creating a number of different pathways for people to engage through the process. Okay, next slide. So some of the things that we're looking for, we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're developing the actual questions that we're going to be asking. But these are some of the considerations that we'll think about in designing that engagement, things like diversity, equity and inclusion, making sure accessibility is not a challenge, any of the First Nations that are nearby that would use the facility, all of those kinds of questions we would pose. Feedback on the design itself. Again, there is a schematic already done and available of what it could look like. But getting feedback on what would work for the actual community is something we would do through that process. Talking about the use of the new space, what activities and programs should be included or contemplated as part of the feasibility process, operating costs. And then taxation is another topic, looking at that, opinions on the impact from the expansion. And again, part of the feasibility study will be to provide feedback on where access for funding might come from the feds or the province or other areas of opportunity. Okay, next slide. These are some of the places that have been identified so far. So again, farmer's market, which I've brought up a couple of times, looking at the seniors facility and smaller focus groups there, looking at service clubs like the Legion, Rotary, Elks, et cetera, an open house at the rink, and then possibly meeting with CINC as part of your partners and outlying communities. Next slide. The funding and financing strategy, which I brought up previously. So there is research available around finding available funding sources and application details. We'll lay that out for you as far as a bit of a plan to access those other funding or financing opportunities, review the financing options and eligibility requirements, request fundraising commitments from charities, service clubs and other organizations that might have the opportunity to contribute. We would definitely be moving to limit and/or mitigate for the district to clear. And then again, giving you the tool to make a final investment decision. Next. Kind of breeze through that really quickly, but any questions?
I appreciate that was a really interesting presentation. I actually have a couple of questions. With your checking with the demographics and whatever, have asking the school groups been part of that process as well?
Yes, being able to identify what those school groups might use the facility and talk as well as part of the process, yeah.
Right, okay. And I think that's all I have. Anybody else with comments?
Yes.
Counselor Frizzle.
I see you have the seniors facility as a place, but also we have a seniors monthly luncheon, which would be a great place for you to come if it works between your timing. So we have one in May, we have one in June.
Oh, perfect.
So we could discuss it because I have at least 60 seniors there at that time. So it's a good way to capture.
Amazing, okay. We'll definitely make note of that for sure. Yeah, and any of those opportunities, we're happy to make use of them. I mean, if people are already gathering, that's the perfect opportunity, absolutely.
Mayor Blackwell? No?
I was just, I remember going through this agenda, I was going to ask where the engineering feasibility was, and there's already a sketch in here of what's possible for there. Which is kind of, I hadn't actually seen that version of it before. It's kind of interesting, the possibilities that could be done, especially with the expansion of the insurance area there to even create even more space there above the foyer or whatever you want for the lobby. Yeah, I think there's lots of possibilities here, and I think there's grand possibilities as well that could really help us with this one.
Definitely.
Love the concept of the large meeting rooms and that sort of thing. And I'm really interested to see what the various groups that would use it, because it's not just going to be sports people. I think there's a lot of options here for multiple use, especially if we build something nice.
Yeah, and I have it on authority that you guys have the best poutine at the complex. We have a lot of hockey dads that come here for hockey, so.
Oh, that's perfect.
We've given Roger that feedback as well. Yeah, and I think the other part that I guess maybe we didn't touch on is that there's also, we'll also be looking at changes potentially, like Roger, our team and Roger have had some conversations about shifting things downstairs and how that might factor into the feasibility and whatnot to be able to make sure we maximize this expansion and what the new opportunities that would arise with that is.
Interesting. And any other counselors?
So in a subsequent report in the same committee meeting, there is a timeline that the public engagement would be completed by May 31st, but it sounds like there might be some adjustments to that now?
Yeah, I think originally the funding was contingent, but Roger was able to get an extension, and I think we're beginning of July, right, to be done?
Yes, we're shooting for the first week in July to be finished. We got an extension on the grant till July 31st.
Okay, so the engagement process would go through from when to when then?
May to June, the end of June.
My second question would be a feasibility like this. How do you go about presenting something? Like just, do you start with the plan and say, what are your thoughts? And you leave it at that?
Yeah, because there is a schematic already done, we would definitely show that to the community and ask for feedback based on that original concept. And then look at further opportunities for flexibility and possible changes depending on what, especially the school groups and the other groups that might use it, might need to maximize the expansion piece.
And my supplemental question will be, is that we've heard through various mediums, and there was a previous, I won't call it a feasibility study, but an inquiry done by Colliers. How are you going to handle any contributions that say, well, this is great, but what about a pool?
Everybody wants a pool, right? Yeah, I mean, I think we have to temper expectations, right? And what's feasible and the reality is, is I think, at least what's been shared so far. And we are just skimming, or we've just gotten the documents, so we still haven't dove completely in. I mean, we'll mitigate those questions as they get raised through the community engagement process. And I think that's a wish list item maybe, but not necessarily part of this feasibility study, because it's fairly specific. So I'm sure we'll get those questions and we'll navigate that as we go through the process.
Do you think you'd also capture that data about how it comes up just as a consequence of the feasibility? I would be interested to see how wide people want to go, not necessarily that that's what this is about. But it is something that bubbles up, and so this does seem an opportunity to get a temperature check on what people are thinking. And also to mitigate any things, well, why would they do this and not listen to that? Like, it's just a communication tool.
Yeah, I think there would be a couple of general questions posed to, again, say, take the temperature of what the need, what the community perspective of the need is, and then have more directed conversations specifically. And then we would gather that data and share it with you as part of the outcomes of the feasibility study, to make sure that you did have that data if it comes up.
And if nobody's got another one, I do have another one just about the costing. So one of the, one of the attributes of this community and some of the nuance with the sportsplex is that there's people that have used the sportsplex, and there's other people that see the sportsplex as something that could see another way in history. How do you approach the issue of taxation? Or how do you, how do you broach that with people without having actually any costs that people could get their heads around? So if this came in at $100,000, and we could say, well, actually, we're going to get a grant for that, like, how do you, how do you navigate people's impressions of costs or what they might contribute?
Well, I think that it's important to set that parameter upfront as part of the engagement and talk about the funding and financing strategy and the potential of what that would look like, right? So that we can pursue other opportunities and whatnot. And I think, you know, the way we generally do our engagement is just being open-ended and able to receive feedback and then being able to address it in the moment, right? Because I think that taxation is a sticky issue, and we want to handle that carefully so that there isn't blowback in the process around, oh my goodness, they're going to be adding this much tax or whatnot. And I think talking about the reality of, you know, what a feasibility study is to address before a final. And this, the feasibility study by undertaking a feasibility study in this manner, you're giving the communities, the community members, the opportunity to provide feedback before a final investment decision is made. So I think I would mitigate it in a few different ways.
Thank you very much. And no other questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, one more. And you've actually just prompted it. In your introduction, you said that part of your strategy as a company is identifying the why. How would you articulate the why of council and why this is important to go out to community? Like, why would we consider the sportsplex? Because has that yet been manifested in terms of a mission statement or?
I don't think we've gotten that far yet, but I think it is important to identify in the initial parts of the engagement to express that in a way that is going to be meaningful to the community members. That'll be part of the engagement design, is establishing that why.
Like including economic drivers and expanding user base?
Well, and I think to your earlier point, you know, there is some, some people who don't use it and some people who do use it. And so maybe by the expansion and exploring what the opportunities are, we can talk about how maybe this could be meaningful for them, for those that don't play hockey or don't come to the arena, the complex, to do work. This opens up that field to actually make it a broader community resource. And not only for the community itself, but drawing in other economic opportunities through that as well.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Love all those comments, actually. That's it, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And now we move on to section six, adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole meetings. Minutes of committee of the whole meeting held April 16th, 2024.
So moved.
All in favor? And passes, right? Okay. Adopt, oh, recommend, okay, do I read that part? Do I have to say that the minutes of the committee of the whole held are adopted? Okay. And then unfinished business, Public Works Department project report. Mr. Carmichael?
So I think this was brought back, just to clarify, this was brought back because it was on table last time. So if we have any specific questions on this?
Oh, I see.
If Mr. Carmichael wants to speak to it, that's great.
Yeah, I'm capable of going through it project by project if you guys would like. Or we could, I could go through some of the just updated.
I think update or any highlights that you felt needed to be gone over?
Sure.
Does that sound right? No? Yes?
Well, I'll go through some highlight ones that have changed since, since then.
Great.
If you have questions, we can backtrack. For the capital projects, they're a little bit delayed, but they are on B C bid today. So that's the Candle Creek Road resurfacing and the, and the paved trail from Dutch Lake Beach to 37 East.
Okay.
Let's go, the road maintenance service level is done. Take that one off my list. The road maintenance contract RFP, I'll be bringing to the next council meeting to
Are we within our time limit if we do that? Sorry. Or like, I know you guys had projections of timeframes of making sure we're within dates to be able to accept bids and things of that nature? Or is it's already on the process?
We're behind schedule, but we're definitely ahead of what we were last year when we tendered. So.
Okay.
So just to clarify that, if I may, is, so it looks like we're maybe two weeks, two weeks, so we're going to have the council review for the May 21st, and then the first meeting in June, we would do the final review, and then it would go out to tenders. Is that the anticipation?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't anticipating another review, but.
So I'm just going with what here? So May 7th, it was a council review?
Yeah.
Been modified. And then completion date, May 21st, final review with council. So that's what I'm wondering. So there seem to be two opportunities to review. So are you saying that the first review will be the 21st, and then the second review would be the first week in June? Or we're just going to have one review as council?
I think we're just going to have one review with council.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Trail sweeping, the roadway sweeping is, is going on right now. They're a little behind schedule, but they brought a second sweeper in today, trying to, trying to catch up.
Can I ask a question?
Any comments on the sweeping?
I actually, it so far looks good. There seems to be a little bit left behind, but I don't know what expectations are. And there's been some queries about what happens with the sand.
Yeah, and I've been sending lots of emails to the province, trying to get clarification on what we can do with it.
Oh, okay.
So it, I've, I've heard like from other municipalities that some reuse it, and some say it's considered hazardous waste. I've looked at the hazardous waste regulations, I don't see it fitting into that category, but it's not very clear.
Okay.
But I, yeah, I would like to get the, the go ahead before I.
So the storage of it currently is at 37 East for some?
Yeah, and we will have to haul it down to the, we're keeping that at the sewage plant right now.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
I think what's great about that new system is it actually shows what's left on the roads and what can end up in the ditches. And so how it becomes a subsequent problem. So this, this model that you've chosen to go forward with has been really positive. And I think that, you know, there is a little bit of debris, but it has been effortless. And I think for anybody who struggles with dust and that, is relieved and grateful for this new approach. So thank you.
Yeah, just a further comment of that, I noticed, I note that both communities north and south of us are actually using the same services here for the same reasons that we are, to stop the buildup on the sides of the road and then to stop some of the sweeping on the lawns and, and get back on track with proper roadside maintenance. So I think this is excellent, and the quality I've seen so far and understanding the delays. And the wind right now is probably taking some of that extra dust off the side of the road, but yeah, it looks fabulous right now. I look forward to seeing it all finished. The fact that there hasn't been any sort of major outcry or buzz from citizens so far other than, when's my road going to get done? I think speaks volumes to the satisfaction out there with us.
And I've been watching them go, and there's very little dust, you know, like they water and, and go. So that's also is a concern for some people, and it hasn't been there. So it's good.
I have the Brookfield Bridge railing on here. I don't know if that's, I don't think that's a this year project, but I'm just getting estimates. Is it this year project? Okay. I, I'm getting the, the estimates updated, and I've been speaking with Watson Engineering, and they, and they said they've just closed some tenders and the prices have been good and the turnouts have been good. And there's lots of people interested in, in that kind of work this year. So that's positive. But I should, I should have the estimate back for the next council meeting, is my, my desire. Clearwater Station Road Blue Bridge, I'm, I'm not getting any feedback from, from the province as of yet. So I keep emailing them every month.
Can you repeat that? Sorry? What'd you say?
They, there was some damage on the, the blue bridge that needed to be repaired. And they reached out to me to let me know, but then they have not answered one email, trying to find out costs or when they're doing the work or, so still in the dark. The water projects, the backup generator is still scheduled June, July. Conference I went to on the water supply was, it was interesting. It was a lot of people worried about snowpack this year. Water conservation, and I want to try and get out some more water conservation information to the public here too. That is watershed monitoring, and I got a template perfectly designed for what we want, and it's excellent. It was well worth going just for that. So they have the water supply design for the Archibald Supply Line to the Archibald Reservoir, sorry. So I had a $50,000 budget for, for design, and I got an $80,000 estimate from, from But it, it looks like we should be low on the Siphon Project, so I'm thinking the design will budget, will balance out. I'll have to talk to Lando about that. I don't know if they're coming from the same place, which is probably. But in my world, that's a good balance. Water pressure analysis underway, hydromaintenance underway. Flushing backflow prevention program, I'm meeting with, with a software company to, to help set us up with a program, you know, find out some costs anyway. So that, yeah, the siphon design is, is under budget and should be complete very soon. They're doing some final geotechnical test, test pits right now.
Okay.
And we should have a pretty tight cost estimate. Laguna disledging mid-June is the anticipated start date. And they figure they'll be done in mid-August, so. Blow rooms are, parts are ordered, but yeah, probably in, in July-ish, they're thinking this summer anyway.
And what's the parts for? Sorry, the blow?
Oh, that's for HVAC stuff. So A, air conditioning.
Yep.
Overlaps with Rogers project for the, for the roof here as well.
Okay. And I think there's duplicate of the report in the, this here, so. Do you, yeah.
Is there?
Yeah. So I think you're.
So the, yeah, the stormwater, the two stormwater projects, the stormwater management and the, and the flood mapping are a little behind schedule, but hoping to have those done by the end of the summer for sure. And then that, that's the same crew that's going to be working on the, the riprap protection project on the North Thompson River. And the G I S, yeah, has started and getting the information switched over to us. It's, it's going slow because I'm the G I S operator.
You got a lot on the go.
Yeah, and the back page is just kind of ongoing stuff here.
That's good. Are you done?
I have a couple, but I'm really interested in the, the pavement management, the, the road assessment vehicles. That sounds like something that, you know, would be a big part of our future planning and budgeting. Is that a service? I'm assuming that's a service we contract out?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and there's specialist companies. And then just a comment on water meter programs. I know that there was grants through U B C M for some of that work. But this is one that I, I think is, you know, along with your installing more valves at key points. I think that's an excellent plan for leak detection and management of systems. But also I think we really need to push forward with getting the timeline I like for yours, your timeline there for getting universal water metering in the ground. And Clearwater, I think we're behind on that as far as an idea or something that we should have. I think it would solve a lot of problems figuring out which side of the fence the leak is happening on or the valve that it's happening on. So I really look forward to that and hopefully we can make that a priority over the next few years to push for that and grants for that. Thanks.
Any other comments? We're moving on? We're good?
Okay.
All right.
And new business, Sports Flex second floor expansion. Oh, we didn't, what?
This is actually the report.
Oh.
Roger. It's, it's in here.
Oh, the back piece?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
With the schematic and stuff at the end there, so.
So a staff report, is this Roger? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so staff report here on the potential for the second floor expansion. Gives you a little bit of history. Mostly it includes the draft of a floor plan, what would fit in the space and some of the possibilities that we could do, use that space for. I just wanted to show that to council before it went out as part of the feasibility study for the public to look at. And if council had any questions about it.
Counselor Sim?
I wasn't sure because it's on two pages, but can you tell me where the curling lounge has been relocated to?
It would be, it could be relocated in two ways. Number one, they, they have a lobby downstairs directly beneath it, which is not used for anything. So for weeknights, the Monday to Thursday curling, they could use that as their lounge. And then in the event of a bond spiel, they could use the conference room, which has a, will have a bar set up in it.
And supplemental to that, because I did look, it's, it's a really great idea. I mean, I have loved conference space. It's fantastic. What I am wondering though is with that conference space is if there was consideration to put a kitchen upstairs in that. And that's only because if you've got that much, how do you keep more food warm? You know, service area, cutlery, like where did the logistics for a conference area go?
Well, we do have the concession downstairs currently and that we could use for food preparation. And then we have a, we have a lift and an elevator to get stuff upstairs, but.
No. I think that, that, no, that, that, I'm not sure that that would work for some of that. That's a lot of up and, up and downing. But I'm also even wondering like where storage would be for like all the plates, the cutlery, like there's, I, and I didn't see that factored in here. So to be a successful conference area for that many people, have we factored in the space of the stuff?
We have not allowed for that, but it's certainly a good comment.
I think you should.
And the same thing would go because I do know that, that, I mean, I think this is an exciting opportunity for the curling lounge. Because technically if there were any banquets or anything, use of that liquor license could actually be attached to that conference facility. So where that would fit in into that design building. And then with that, you've got that area, would it overlook the ice? Because it's, you've put in a really nice blind system currently now. So with that area where the conference areas.
It does, it would have windows. That's the south wall facing the hockey arena. And there would be windows in that wall as well as the north wall. And yes, there's, could certainly be blinds to, to, you know, cover up the hockey or the bright lights, et cetera, from the arena.
Yeah, or be able to see it while having the lounge. Like that's what I was wondering is just how we use that space. You know, to, to be a bit more social for lots of different things. Because I do know that, and we've seen it. There's a number of occasions where, you know, the bond spills are going on, there's a hockey tournament and you can do both. And that upstairs space has been quite vibrant.
Yes. Now, the, I can't read this with my glasses. The Studio D section on here, which is the existing lounge, could continue to be a lounge. It could be very multifunctional and used for different things. It could also be a large play area for kids. It could be a yoga studio. There, there's, you know, really limitless opportunities up there.
Yeah, and, and, sorry if I may.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I think, I think one of the key things to this is actually putting in a proper elevator. And I'm really glad to see, and I think the location for that is great as well as stairs in the same location. Because what we have currently there makes that, talk about accessibility for the broad base of population. The stairs and the, the existing lift have been a huge challenge. You know, most curlers don't have their knees left, so getting low to the ice has been one challenge, but getting upstairs for activities afterwards. Yeah, it's kind of a frightening little corridor there that we currently have right now. Especially if people had a couple of wobbly pups. But yeah, no, I, I think with a lot of these spaces being here, I think there's a lot of options that we could use. And, and having seen how the, to Counselor Sim's point about storage, even built-in cabinets for partial storage of things like plates and stuff like that, I think there's, there's a lot more space here, which allows for a lot more opportunity, I think. Yeah, I think this is fabulous. I think this is a fabulous space.
I was, I was at a conference last week and they spoke about the importance of having community buildings for emergencies. And for climate change, smoke in the valley, things like that, being able to get people together, but not outside. And that would work well for this. Also, the opportunity for evacuation, emergency services, E O C, things like that. The other thing that we've included here is inclusive washrooms and change rooms.
I saw that.
And what's interesting about that is that is not covered under the B C building code in any form or way. So we would, yeah, so what we've come up with here is just something that we've come up with as an idea of what would work.
But that's why we're going out for public feedback.
Yeah, uh, yeah. So I, I would be curious because I was interested about the fact that there's the, the changing rooms as well as the washrooms and, you know, a good amount of space. Looks like it's been dedicated to both. And it seems like it's, it's how to use that space. Are there showers up there?
No showers. At, at this time, there is no plan for showers.
And, and I only ask on the heels of just what you said about having those sort of evacuation centers or, or areas like that. Granted, we've got all the showers downstairs. Not that they have warm water depending on, you know. I mean, I think that that's a pay-to-play option. I didn't realize we had that. And then the, the last question I have for Studio A, B, and C, are, would those be retractable walls? So they've got more flexibility for space?
We weren't planning on that at this time, but that, that's possible for sure.
And again, if that was the case, looking just where we store like the chairs, tables and, and all of that. Because this seems to be so dynamic. I would think that maybe even the hotels in town would see this as a tremendous opportunity, looking at conference costs and, and Kamloops and that. It's a really strong economic reason for expansion, just in addition to. Thanks.
Yeah, and I, I think if the intent is to try and make it a year-round community center, I think this is a huge start.
And just on that note, there was a couple that is getting married in Clearwater. It's just a little story. They're actually using this ski hill, but they canvassed every area around here. They know nothing about Clearwater and they're coming here to get married because it was the best venue with the cost availability. So, and they have no ties here, but they researched the area. So if we could somehow incorporate this into being a hub of people to come here, that would be.
Well, between the lake and the park, there's certainly a lot of nice spots for weddings and photo shoots and stuff like that.
For sure, yeah. And any other comments or questions?
I guess just one last. This one would tie into, and this may be operational. So if I've overstepped or it can't be answered, no, no problem on that. But it does tie into the fact that if there is conference centers that are, you know, taken by third parties, different events is, would that have to be attached to the liquor license of the curling lounge? In which case that does need to be factored in?
I would not want it to be. If that makes sense. I, I don't think it's good for a private club to have control of that for the whole building.
Okay, that sounds operational. Super, thanks.
And we'll be moving along. So let's move to nine point two, Protective Services, January to April, two thousand twenty-four update. Is that you, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chair Bratton. Good. I just wanted to provide some highlights of what's been going on in Protective Services over the past four months. Our call volume is up again this year by about twenty-nine percent. Which, I don't know if that's a factor that's going to be continuing, but First Responder Medical is one of the factors. And the other one is some of the, on the second page, the structure and vehicle fires we've had this year already. So I'm sure most of you have already known about those. Our bush truck two is complete. We received it late twenty-twenty-three, put it into service in January. The old one, we put a flat deck on it and some cabinets and that'll be the response for the medical and the secondary wildland truck. And we can tow the truck, the S P U trailer, the structured protection trailer with that. What else? On page, the next page, fifty-six, some staffing highlights, some training that's been attended. Myself and one other person went to the Fire Smart Residency Training Summit in Prince George. Great to see huge turnout from last, over the last year was over seven hundred people there.
Wow.
I think it's just going to keep getting bigger and bigger because it's such a hot topic. Got some great ideas on our Fire Smart program that we're going to be putting in place with the grant we've applied for. You'll see the staff report coming up in the council meeting at two. So we've done quite a bit of emergency management training and we are doing some more following at the end of the week. And then an incident or an exercise at the end of the month. That exercise in the month was grant-funded through the E O C Emergency Operations Center, equipment and training from U B C M. So it's going to be with us and SIMP, joint tabletop. And some stats on bylaw enforcement. This year, there's eight new files, some files from leftover from last year, some inquiries. So what I'm tracking there is stuff that I'm getting calls or emails. It's either just in the, not in the DOC, not in district or they're in the T N R D, but you know, you're directing them to the proper.
That's good to know.
Authorities there?
Yep.
Right? Because some people that move up to the area think that
Don't know.
Clearwater is, is Blackpool and Badenby and Birch Island, so.
Yeah.
There's a bit of a breakdown of what the, the files are from this year. And then in the last, same period last year, we had, you know, just two new files, three current files and four inquiries in the same period. It's just the January to April. April, May, June is when it starts getting a bit busier normally, so. That's my update.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
Thank you for the detailed report there. And it's interesting to see that bylaw inquiries, I mean, I'm getting some of them on my inbox too. So it definitely seemed to have heated up this year versus last year. I think it's because we have had a shorter winter and people can see things that are on the ground, you know, earlier. So, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to get, I have some questions, but I don't want to get specifics on files. So thank you.
Counselor Sim?
I was, I was, I was interested about the medical emergencies and I don't know if there's anything further that you can share about. Does that indicate sort of some pressures or some other mitigating factors that council needs to somehow be addressed or is you've got it handled?
I think it's just our call volume for B C ambulance and we're getting like a higher category, more, they're getting more of those type of calls, it seems. So we get dispatched to those as well, right? So they're reds and they're purples as their, their coding. So there's, those are the high life safety ones, you know, cardiac and, and those types. So we get dispatched to those as well to assist. A lot of times we're just assisting, we're not the first. But I do know, starting May, they changed their, the way they dispatch or the way they schedule their cars now. They've gone back to a pager on, on the second car.
Yeah, so that's been worked on for a while now. So it's happening across, so during COVID, there was a system called Alpha and Juliet. So Alpha is your primary car that's twenty-four seven access. Juliet was basically marrying that. Now that the mass, the, as far as the province is concerned, the pandemic is over. They're going back to the system, which is Alpha, keeping that. And then the second car becomes Kilo. Kilo is a reasonable call out time on call. The people that are in the Kilo car, so the second car that's active, they get paid for probably four hours a day and then eight hours of on-call at twelve dollars an hour. But the big difference versus
Juliet.
Juliet is, there is no, Juliet, there was a ninety-second, I believe, response time. So they had ninety seconds to be in the ambulance and on the road. There is no set standard for that under Kilo. So if you have one member of your crew, twenty minutes, living twenty minutes out of town and, you know, up the park road or in Blackpool, if it's reasonable, that, that's the response time before they get to the station, get in the ambulance and start going. And us, barrier is not in the same situation because they don't have an active functioning medical clinic right now. So they've been given a stay of execution on that for another eight months. But us Chase and pretty much every other community our size is, is being, that's being restored. That, that system of Alpha Kilo is the new, is, is what it was before. It's going back to essentially what it was before. The only change is instead of four dollars on call, they're getting paid twelve dollars on call.
Are we able to, to put a letter or advocate? Because this is the way they used to do it ten, fifteen years ago.
I think it's worth a, a ask for ministers meeting at U B C M.
Yeah, for. Yeah, for sure.
You know, and that can be backed up with a letter for sure. I think there would be a lot of communities that would jump on board that.
Our community is too spread out. You could be a good half an hour away, not just twenty minutes, and it's not life saving. So anyway.
Has been brought to B C M. This is attention multiple times.
Counselor Sim?
Uh, also just the fact that it's um below minimum wage, but that's the obvious. Um, so I am curious with with the changes, what would the impact be for the fire department? So if you've got two sort of color coatings and and where I'm where I'm going with this is that does this become some sort of a download onto a volunteer fire department?
I can't say for certain, but it may because it's they've just started that in May, that different call schedule.
Yeah.
So time will tell, I guess. Um, I know that like the on call, the pager car, that's the one that'll do the transfers.
Oh, I see.
Whereas the Alpha will stay in town, but if they're in use, they'll definitely call us if there's another emergency or it's bigger. So in past, like when we first started doing the F R program, that's when they had the Alpha Kilo cars. That's why we got into it because we needed to assist them some more. So I don't know if it'll go back to that kind of numbers or if it'll just kind of keep creeping up because there's a lot more happening in the world, right? There's the population on the road is more and you know, the population's aging here as well.
That was another question is if you're finding that some of these callouts are um reflective of our demographics and some of the data.
Definitely. I would say the majority of the F R calls are the demographics.
Okay, thank you very much.
The age demographic, yeah.
Do you have anything further or are you finished?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions or? Okay, and I guess we are on to adjournment and um I forget how to do that. Motion to adjourn. Second, Lynn. All those in favor? Did you get that, Mr. Prime? Okay, or Jenna? And um
Yeah.
Adjourned. Yes.
Yeah, we'll see you at two o'clock.
It's good. It's really good.
Go ahead whenever you're ready, Mario.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, your worship members of council. Um, pleased to be here today to present the financial statements of the District of Clearwater for the year ended December thirty first two thousand and twenty three. Um, I have a brief slideshow that I'll walk you through. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the information that was provided in your council agenda package. So um, again, this year we are proposing a clean audit opinion. So in our opinion, these statements do present fairly the results of the district for the year ended December thirty first two thousand and twenty three. And if these statements are approved by council today as required um under the community charter, I will be signing off the audit report today. So when we start to look at our statement of financial position, this is a snapshot of all of your assets and liabilities that you have at the end of the year. We could see that our financial asset uh position did increase uh from fourteen point two million to sixteen point seven million. Um, and we'll talk about where those increases came from in a moment when we get to the statement of operations. Um, but we also see that our liabilities did increase slightly from two million dollars to two point two million dollars. Um, and that excludes our um long term M F A debt. But when we look at our net financial asset position, that's a measure of what resources you have. If we were to pay off all of our obligations tomorrow, what would be left to execute the budget? And that increased from eleven point nine million to fourteen point two million, so a two point three million dollar increase um in the year. And when we look at where um things came in, this next slide talks about our revenues for the year, and we have a couple of important items to look at. And although our total revenue came in at nine point one million, just under our budget of nine point four million and up from last year, if we ignore the two million dollar donation received, which would have been nine point nine, um, there were a couple of main areas um that we saw that we were favorable to budget this year. Um, you know, the first one and most important one, I think, is the investment income. Um, it came at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. Had a budget of two hundred thirty four thousand and came in at si- one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that was uh quite common this year for many municipalities because of the growing community fund grant that was received. And that one point five million, which is predominantly unspent, is sitting in your government grants and transfers this year. And so we're seeing that um very favorable to variance budget in our investment income. And um again, I want to applaud management on making sure that as um monies were received, that it was put to work and taking advantage of the higher interest rate environment. Because five hundred, an extra five hundred thousand dollars in a community of this size does go quite a long way. And this next slide, just kind of when we talk about nine million dollars in revenue, it breaks it down by um the various areas that you have. And as you can see, taxation um is just over a third of your revenue, which is why we spend so much time um and diligence on making sure that we get our tax rate by law right. Um, two point eight million dollars in government funding received um is also a very significant portion. When we look at our expenses and we compare um budgets to actual into the prior year, um total expenses came in at seven twenty two million with um a two million dollar favorable uh variance against budget, which was at nine point two million. And we could see that the largest um area for that was in the sewer utility. There was a planned dredging of um the source or the sewer systems this year, and um that did not happen, which helped contribute to your favorable budget. When we look at the um expenses breakdown by type, we could see general operating expenses uh making up uh three point three million of that nine million dollars, so a third of it. Uh, two million dollars in salaries for the district and then one point eight million in depreciation for um on your capital assets. But if we bring it all together, we end up at an annual surplus for accounting purposes of one point eight million dollars versus a five point six million dollar surplus last year and a budget of a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. Now, it's important to remember that when we prepare the financial statements, they are not prepared in the same way that your budget bylaws created. Um, when we see a surplus and we see um here, it's not necessarily the same because in your budget, you're expensing your uh capital projects where it becomes an asset on the financial statements, um on the financial statement, um your depreciation of your uh capital assets is an expense, but it's not funded in your budget. And so this slide gets us as close as we can to how we did against our budget. And so if we start with an annual surplus of one point eight million dollars, deduct our capital projects, add back um our depreciation. We get to that two point three six million dollar increase in our financial position that we talked about earlier, which, as we'll see on the coming slides, um was moved into your reserve funds um this year. And when we look at that variance of uh one point eight million versus an annual surplus of a hundred fifty one thousand for accounting purposes. Again, we look at the dredging that didn't happen. We look at the investment income that was generated. Fairly easy to see um how that happened this year and uh no real surprises other than these couple of items. And bringing it um full circle, uh if we look, we have a total accumulated surplus of fifty four hundred million dollars. And as a reminder, that is not what we have available for spend. Included in that fifty four million is thirty nine point nine million in our invested in tangible capital assets, which is accountant speak for looking in our rearview mirror and recording on the statements. Here's what we've spent historically on all of our infrastructure, less depreciation, less what we owe on it. So it's equity that we have in our community, but it's not necessarily money that is available to be spent or money that we can borrow against. We have four million dollars in our unrestricted, which is the money that management has to execute the budget um in accordance with uh what was approved. And then we have ten point six million dollars in reserve funds. And this next slide just details um what that ten point six million dollars is made up for. And the biggest item to highlight here is, of course, growing communities fund, that one point five million dollars that was received from the province that I know that management is evaluating on how can be appropriately deployed um is sitting in a reserve fund and accumulating interest now as well. And so I'm going to stop there and open it up for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mario? And for the audience, uh, we've seen most of this before and had most of it explained to Mario. So we've asked most of our questions, but if there anything else is coming to light um during this presentation? If not, um, we do have a motion uh that the council accepts the twenty twenty three audited financial statements as presented by Mario Perotti of Manager B D O Canada L L P at the May seventh twenty twenty four regular council meeting. Moved by Counsel Matheson, seconded by Counsel Frizzle. Discussion? If not, all those in favor? That passes. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your hard work and uh the work of staff and uh getting this all together. Um, I know this time of year is a lot of work and a lot of long days and a lot of weekends. So uh, thank you for this and uh and good luck with your other three hundred and no, what is it? Thirty six more communities that you have to do this with in the next little while, Mario?
Not quite thirty six, but we're getting there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good to see you again. Thank you. Have a nice day. Bye bye.
See you as well.
Bye. Uh, moving on to item nine, nine point one, minutes of the regular. Oh, did I actually move uh all in favor of that? Did I all in favor of that? I did. Okay, sorry. I I just got lost a little bit in my head. Uh, adoption of the minutes of council meeting, minutes of the regular council meeting held April sixteenth twenty twenty four. Any errors or omissions? If not, can I get a mover and a seconder on that? Moved by Counselor Bratton, seconded by Counselor Matheson. All those in favor? Thank you. Um, moving on to nothing under ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, moving on to mayor's reports. Uh, we had quite a gap between the last council meetings, had some significant things going on, but um also a lot of nice time off. Um, uh, April eighteenth and nineteenth, uh with T N R D sessions, we had a great presentation there uh on the nineteenth by the Nutsford um Volunteer Community Fire Society. I can't remember what the name is. Anyways, they've set up basically a model for uh rural communities and corporate areas to to look after fire protection in their own areas. And I I think at some point, if the council's interested, I'd like to invite them to Clearwater to do a presentation for the general public, for ourselves and uh and Blackpool and uh area. Director Zhao's area and Director Zhao would also like to co-sponsor that. So I'll I'll reach out to them and see what their availability is like, if everybody's okay with that. Um, because it's a model that the B C Wildfire Services accepts accepts uh for um volunteers um to get involved in wildfire fighting in their region. So I think it'd be important to presentation for people to hear. Uh, on Tuesday, the twenty third of April, I co-presented at the Health Quality B C Forum with um Heidi Schilling from our hospital. Um, that was for an award for leadership uh for the time um of when we were at sixty plus closures. Uh, and now we've gone into two since that occurred uh in the fall of twenty twenty two. Uh, exceptionally well received um presentation. Uh, it was basically a question format, basically a talk show format. Um, and a lot of questions from the the audience. And I left after the presentation, but apparently Heidi had further questions from uh everybody in the audience um for the next few days of the convention. So um a great advertising opportunity because there was hundreds of medical professionals at that conference, some of which may want to come work here one day. Uh, Thursday, twenty fifth, I spoke to the Chamber of Commerce on general issues around Clearwater, gave them updates on a lot of things that we have going on. Uh, the other presenter there was Community Futures, which is trying to increase its presence in the North Thompson Valley. Um, with signs of it, they they do have a staffer here, but they may expand their their um time, the the time that they have in the budget they have for that person. Um, to try to become more of a permanent position. Um, on Monday, the twenty ninth, I did an economic development tour put on by B C Timber Sales uh in association with uh Ministry of Forests and sponsored by SIMP. It was fascinating. Um, started off at uh Paradigm, um, which is a uh building company in the Lewis Creek Industrial Park, and they basically make prefabricated wall structures and kits um for buildings. Um, huge warehouse, probably about as big as the Sportsplex. Uh, you could walk around without a hard hat. You didn't need a dust mask. They have robots building walls. They have human beings uh wearing walls. You barely needed a hearing protection. It's a fascinating place. Uh, they are so busy that they are not taking orders. They're taking orders over a year out and they're already expanding onto another property to create a second factory down there. And this was all part of a an a- added value tour um that uh B C Timber Sales put on to give uh local timber producers, including our community forest, an idea of what could be accomplished in a small town uh or a small community forest. The other ones that we went to is Woodco, which is a mill that does rough cut timber in Barrier. Um, they are constantly looking for employees. They are actually at the point where they call everybody up and decide how many days a week they can work because they're they're short of certain positions um on those lines. So some weeks, they only work four days a week on a day shift. Um, so if you know anybody that needs a job, Woodco is uh is definitely hiring. Um, and then the last couple were Nest, our own Nest Timber Homes or Timberframe here in Clearwater. Uh, great discussion with um Kim and Dan Moneyman, um about their need for a very small amount of premium fur logs um to continue with their business, which is incredibly hard thing for them to actually acquire. Um, because of the control of the large forest companies on every single load of logs. They essentially need one or two lo- loads of logs a year of a certain type of fur, and nobody wants to give that up to them. Um, they are also creating so much value uh that one cubic meter worth of fur end product is worth twenty five hundred dollars. So there's the same quality of wood that I used to chop up and give to the Germans for for firewood, the European tourists for firewood. Uh, for a cubic meter, I might have got forty dollars worth of firewood sales. They're getting twenty five hundred dollars for that same product. So uh, you know, that that's kind of added value that we could really use in expansion of in this town. And then the the SIMP uh property up at uh Vavenby with the log sort. Uh, they have so much area there. They are looking at every opportunity to use that land for a multitude of things, whether it be sorting logs, storage of industrial stuff, which is what they've done the last couple of years with Round Mountain. Um, but they have they have big plans and and big dreams for that area. Uh, Wednesday, May first, myself and Counsel Bratton attended Agenda Setting. Um, I also had another meeting after that with the C A O to discuss core issues. Um, Monday, the fifth, I sat in, which is yesterday, I guess. I sat in a T N R D Zoom about um cell and broadband service. And that was hosted by the provincial government. They now have a department, I believe, attached to municipal services or innovation, Ministry of Innovation uh of about forty staffers that their their sole job is to look for um projects in small towns or rural communities that need to be done by uh the major telecoms and to advocate for those and to find funding for those. Um, and this is a new relatively new department. I believe they had about eight employees a year ago and they're now up plus forty. Uh, so we did pitch uh myself and Directors out, it pitched uh the rural areas around Clearwater, especially the upper Clearwater Valley that are in desperate need of cellphone coverage. Uh, and they actually have a connection to uh Ministry of Environment and will talk to B C Parks about uh what kind of project would need to go up there in order to create that. So that's the first sort of good news I've heard on that, especially since it's not coming from the telecom companies. It's actually coming from government wishing to push that to happen. So uh, we hope to get more on that in the next few months. Uh, and as a result of that, I I had actually inquired back with uh Mr. Crookshank, who is our, he used to be um uh Megan uh Chadwick, who was our representative for Tellis and Maskon. And uh, Mr. Crookshank this morning informed me that the reason we're seeing all these Tellis and private contract um uh communications trucks, bucket trucks around town is because they're upgrading our whole system uh in Clearwater to be able to handle fiber with the potential of one Uh, in Clearwater to be able to handle fiber with the potential of one gig download internet speeds. Uh, which is phenomenal. That's basically takes us about uh. Most communities, that would be a forty per forty time improvement over what they currently have. And I I'm. Going to ask for a area map just to find out. How, what the coverage within the district of Clearwater will be for that will be all communities. But it should free up and help a lot of other areas because it will take pressure off of. Uh, the cellular hub network and that sort of thing if this is widespread. Um, this is a game changer level internet expansion here and it's all, my understanding is part of something called Project Penny. Which is Penny refers to copper. Um, that Telus is trying to remove all of its copper lines wherever it possibly can and upgrade them to fiber optic. So. You notice some pretty heavy looking cables on the poles out there. That's why that's the case. So. Um, I will get more information on that, but uh, Mr. Crookshank assured me that that was perfectly fine for me to make that information public. So. Yeah, so that, you know, one of those things that we've been advocating for years is, and may actually, I don't know if it'll solve Greer. Cause you know, Greer is the land that time forgot, but uh, for the rest of the community, uh, you know, for sure, I I I I hope that Greer is on the map for that. Uh, and that's my report. Thank you.
I have a question, just on the um, the value added. Um, and you were talking about how your forty dollar worth of firewood had you been something else. You can now have twenty five hundred. What's needed to get to that point?
Uh, what's needed to get to the point? The ideas are out there. It's actually supply. It's dedicated supply for 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 directly for the moneymans.
Yeah.
In particular, they need to be able to go out into the forest, into the, onto the woodlot or into the community forest and actually. Identify which trees that they need, standing or down for their product. It's got to be a specific type of fur, dimensional, clear. Uh, that's what they need to satisfy the demand of their customers. They are literally talking about one log. Long logging truck load of that material here and because there is such. Uh, because there's contracts and obligations to Interfor and the other larger players in this um. In this industry. Prying loose basically that one truckload of of premium logs, logs a year, they're at their wits end to try to do that. And they've actually curtailed their business a little bit, um, because it's been so difficult to achieve that. So. You know, community, members of community forest or uh, the manager was there and the other community forest manager was there as well from Barrier. Um, hopefully between them and and uh, B C Timber Sales were, it was, they were told. That they need to change how their system works for small timber sales on these specific items. Um, everybody in the room, including uh, Cookby Lamb Pro. Made that quite clear that that had to change because that's where this is likely to come from, this specific type of wood. Um, that B C Timber Sales needs to to move on to better practices and make that available to small added value operators instead of. Just funneling it all to the large companies.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, councillor Bratton, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Uh, not a ton to report this time. I was fairly quiet. I did attend Agenda Setting, like Mayor Blackwell said, that was very interesting. And I got to um, uh, see how things run in behind the scenes a bit. I've only been to two, so that was cool. Um, uh, just to reiterate, I sound like, you know, a broken record. May eighteenth is is a, uh, oh, May, May long weekend. So we have the parade and um, lots of activities and the um. Market is running a little later, different times. So um, check out the posts and um, everybody get afloat in or come and hang out. Um, something I'd like to, I was just thinking about is July first, we might have to start thinking about Canada Day in case it hasn't. Come up on the radar yet. Um, uh, we quite often have a Canada Day barbecue, so just in case that comes up. And um, that is all I have.
Thank you. Yes, I I would love to do a Canada Day barbecue again this year. Uh, councillor Frizzle.
Do we need a motion to make any next steps on that then for Canada Day?
I think we'll bat that around and and staff have some ideas on that when they're not chewing. Yeah, yeah. Uh, councillor Frizzle.
Thank you. Um, I attended the Tourism Old Gray Meeting on April twenty third and they're excited that we have the meeting in the new updated. Re-renovated Visitor Information Center. It looks wonderful. They opened um, on Monday, April twenty ninth. Um, so if you have a chance to go and have a look at it, it's. Lot more open. It's very bright and airy. The stairs are are better. There's um. New entrances to come in, so it's easier for handicapped to come in. Washrooms. I thi- I think they've just been painted. But there's, um, they've got now, they've got a um. Uh, staff room where they can just sort of hop, get away from them for a bit there. They've. There's been a lot of changes and they're quite excited about it and they're looking to um. Be open all year round this year. So they're just working on that. So that would be really good. I just uh, wanted to update you though on the seniors there. You've had their their last learn and lunch. They had the advanced care planning, that community paramedics. The home health nurse and the hospice came in and talked to it from their three different perspectives. It was very well received. We had the booklets and I've had several people call me and um, help with them. Filling them out and how how to do it because you have to really be. Really think about what you want in your. In your end of life planning. But we did have a discussion after the lunch, the the four of us, the the speakers, and they would really like to have another. Type of meeting with people that are under sixty years old to ensure that their documents are in place. So we're looking to do that. Um, the the next learn and lunch will be um, the fire department coming to talk about. Sorry, my voice. Emergency management and um. On how to be prepared and whatnot for the upcoming season. Um, the chief has informed me that twelve seniors have had their property assessed for fire smarting, so that's really good to hear. And um. Also would like to report, seniors have received fun- funding from the New Horizons for Seniors Program and from the United Way. So we're excited about. Um, a year of programming and adventures in the next little while. Yes, very, very good news. We had an Alzheimer's workshop. Well, the seniors didn't, but we had a Alzheimer's workshop um, for. Information for caregivers on understanding the behaviors of the people that they're caring for. And it was very clear that we have to have another workshop on caregiver resiliency and how to look after themselves and how to best um. Make sure that they are, they survive what they're going through because it's a very difficult so. Thing that they're doing and it's not going to change. So that's going to be September nineteenth and it'll be all about the caregiver. Rather than the person that they're caring for. So that's my report. Thank you.
Any questions on that? Oh, yeah, go ahead, councillor Bratton, yeah.
I have a little bit of a question. Can anybody come to the uh, those, uh, Alzheimer's?
It is mostly for people, for the caregivers, but I am more than willing to open it up to people to come and so they. Can be prepared because it could very easily happen to your family member before you know it.
That's my question. I, um, some that don't live here, but they have people they care for here and I'm curious if I can extend the invitation to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, both councillor Herring and councillor Mackenzie uh, are unfortunately away for work today. Councillor Matheson, you're up next.
Thank you. Fairly quiet a couple of weeks. I was at the Silga event of with councillor Bratton for a couple of days. And uh, it was fairly well attended down there. Uh, I was down there privately, but I did manage to slip into one of the uh, presentations. Put on by Fulton Company, dealing with conflict of interest. I found it really interesting and uh. The bottom line that came out of that was if it even hints at being a conflict, it is a conflict. It was, it kind of caught me by surprise on a few of the things as well. And uh, I I think it'd be worthwhile for us to have a a refresher on that at some point because uh. There was some interesting stuff came out of it. So. I also attended uh, the North Thompson Art Council for Teresa Selby Baker's uh. Photo exhibit that uh, without saying a word. And it's really interesting. If you get a chance, drop down to the Art North Thompson Arts Center and uh, it's quite interesting. She's got a hundred portraits she did in one year. And some she knew and most she didn't. And uh, it's it's pretty amazing, different mediums and everything. So it's worth, worth checking out. That's it.
Oh, so it's the one I never agree. Okay, thank you. I just, yeah. Usually attach how you relate to that. Thank you. Uh, councillor Sim.
Um, thanks very much. First of all, I just want to say a huge thanks to the fire department for responding to a fire in no man's land. Um, which was up on Candle Creek Road. Um, there was a very small tree that fell down and decided to spark and put out a whole fire out, um. Fire within areas and internet went down. What was interesting is it was no man's land. What I also found interesting because there was a couple of property owners there who were also caught within no man's land and sort of the question that they had raised. How do we get back into the district?
Do you, you are aware that there is going to be a Birch Island um, referendum coming up for fire protection? So it may actually. Incorporate everything from our boundary to there, just just.
No, it's, it's good to know. I mean, uh, Fire Chief Smith is here. It was a weird thing, um, being there. I don't know if you wanted to comment on anything, but. The fact that we had um, a bylaw that allowed our fire department to address was really, really important. Um, do you have anything else that you want to add or to correct?
Uh, no, I think you captured it all. Um, it was a tree fell on the power line, knocked it down to some. Fairly dry, daffy areas and it's probably a fire about twenty by thirty feet in size. Yeah. So, but it was in the no man's land on Candle Creek Road, so.
Also in the no cell zone, so you can appreciate maybe some of the concerns that the upper Clearwater Valley would have in regards to to uh, cellphone and that. So. Uh, grateful for that. Um, also I was joined by councillor Bratton and councillor Frizzle uh, to the hospital auxiliary tea on Sunday. Um, which was great and always a a good afternoon and definitely appreciated uh, their attendance as well as the sponsorship of the table. Um, they made some uh, great uh, announcements. I think it was something in excess of seventy thousand dollars of of new. Eighty thousand um, for projects and initiatives going to our local hospital. And it was very nice to uh, see a number of our physicians there who had quite a good time at the the auction table. Um, I, later that afternoon, um, I joined the walk for the missing and murdered indigenous women. And there had to be about fifty people who attended that. And I really want to express gratitude to the organizers of that and and keeping that. Um, awareness going within our community. And uh, it was, it was beautiful to be a part of a a community that um. Was just able to to pause for a moment there. So uh, that was good. I was able to pop by and see the art display and you're right, it really. Great. And certainly for anybody who wants to go see the art that's being done there, it's the, the new facility at Evergreen Acres. Um, also went to the karaoke night at the ski hill and met a bunch of people who were so happy to call Clearwater home. Uh, and by the way, I just bartended. I didn't sing or do anything. But it was so fun to see a group of people of under thirty who'd said, yeah, we've got a great friend group. Fifteen or twenty of us and they've come from all different sort of professional walks, definitely uh, sharing um, the interest that remote work can bring them to places. Uh, that they can be with people. And so those, those connections um, are are great. Uh, grad is coming up and is there still a banner downstairs where the District of Clearwater acknowledges graduates? Yeah, just, just wondering, I mean, it it is always nice when your community kind of acknowledges the youth uh, for that, which is interesting. Um, I also was at the Rural and Remote uh, Conference for Healthcare in Edmonton. Uh, and it was great to hear how many people. Uh, knew about Clearwater, were excited about Clearwater, uh, wanting to consider doing um, different, either locums or various things. Certainly some of our local restaurants have got a great reputation, so they're keen to come for that and our mountain biking. So I just want to share that. Lastly, uh, we did have um, a professional healthcare person who came as a result of seeing both the interior health video as well as the District of Clearwater. So when people ask, what does the District of Clearwater do to, for recruiting? We don't do the recruiting, but just by having that video, it promotes recruitment efforts. And I think that Mayor Blackwell can attest to that from having been at Quality Forum. And then I also just want to say thanks for the newsletter that was, that was put out. Uh, it was quite um, a beefy, beefy read. And I don't know, some people did draw to my attention that by the time it hit their, their mailbox, some of the things were, had been missed. And so they were a bit sorry about that. So. Um, but I think that that's because there's always so much going on, but ideally we can keep an eye on those, those timelines uh, and that. Full page of things. Uh, and I think that was, yep, I think that covers it all. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, moving on to item sixteen point one, uh, there is a C A O report on table. I don't know if Mr. Johnson wants to speak to some of that. I think so.
Uh, does councillor wish me to speak to it?
Does councillor wish Mr. Johnson to speak to anything here? Are there any questions? Quite a lot on there.
Uh, I would have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead councillor Sim.
But first of all, does anybody else have questions?
Let these, let everybody else catch up if you're ready to go. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, first of all, I just want to ask about the business licensing and in there, um, renewing businesses licenses is essential to ensure compliance. I know that when we first brought in business licensing, there was some discussion about why have it. Um, and I don't know if it's worth kind of a refresh that some businesses who did get business licenses, it is that actually reflected favorably when they. Uh, went to a lending institute and that the the uh, institutes would say, you know, do you have your business license? So there was some particular tools that maybe businesses aren't aware of. And so does it need a refresh on why have one?
Yeah, so, so business licensing is the, one of the key triggers for local governments to use to make sure that businesses are complying with um, zoning. That they're apply, um, that they're complying with building inspection, that they're complying with fire inspections. That their renewed business license also has the opportunity for the R C N P to look at it, the liquor licensing department. And the provincial government. That is really the trigger. I know some people I've heard uh, say, you know, well, business licensing is is revenue generating and it can be. Uh, but our, our fee is quite low based on what the, what the um. Level of inspections are and how we go through to make sure that everybody is operating in the same playing field. And. It's unfortunate that some businesses haven't taken out uh, their revised business license, which puts them at an advantage over other businesses that comply. With zoning, inspections, liquor licensing. And what we want to make sure is that the playing field is the same for everyone. Which is why we're looking at business licenses to make sure that if you're in business, that you've got a business license so that we can make sure that it's safe for the public. Because when the business license is renewed, the fire department goes through and makes sure that the occupancy that they've been given. Is actually intended for the safe use. And we've got some businesses uh, where the public is uh, entering the facilities and they haven't had the proper inspections, which. Could potentially open us up to liability. So, you know, we talked about this as a group and we want to make sure that that level playing field is there. And I encourage those businesses. That haven't fulfilled their business license obligations, that they do so before we have to get to, you know, compliance, which can be, you know, fines. That's, that's on the. Far end of the scale. We'd rather work with people to get people into compliance and uh, that's what our intention is. And that's why I've got this on the, on the public report. Is so that people are aware of uh, what we're doing and um, that it is a level playing field for all businesses in our community.
Thank you for that. Uh, the next question that I had was under your planning update and I'm just wondering when will be brought to the council table about any service gaps for infrastructure? Uh, for any potential subdivisions or otherwise.
Yeah, thanks for that. We've got a a number of initiatives underway where we're looking at uh, the. Triggers for improvements to our infrastructure based on what development is taking out of our capacity. And some of the ways that we've looked at uh, addressing these infrastructure needs is looking at D C Cs. Whether or not we can include these as some projects, uh, looking at the time where D C Cs are payable to the district. Right now, they're payable at the time of building permit. And we're finding that that's problematic from the perspective of. Uh, if somebody buys raw land, often they'll come in for a building permit and they're not aware that D C Cs are payable in the amount of about seven thousand dollars. And uh, that, you know, was quite problematic for some people when they're looking at their budget. So. To answer your question, there will be a comprehensive report in June. Uh, we're waiting right now for the development approval grant through U B C M. If we do any work on the development file right now, when, since we've made application, uh, we wouldn't be able to charge that back to the grant. So what we want to do is protect the taxpayer and protect the taxpayer from us expending time out of taxation. To go towards fixing the development files when potentially uh, the provincial government will fund that for us. So. I'm hoping to get a favorable response on the grant in the next few weeks, but you can expect to see a report in June. On development and where we're at and some of the things we need to fix, which will be taking us beyond the last report that I brought to you, which was in uh, January and February.
Great, thank you for that. And then my final one is just on the rainbow dock and appreciation. Um, and. I made a mistake at the last meeting. Um, I didn't ask enough questions about this, like, how far is it? What's it going to look like? What kind of paint? Um, and it just sounded like an exciting project for a lot of good reasons. And so I've, uh, talked about that project within the community and I've been surprised at some of the responses. And there is concern over, is it going to last? Is it going to fade? All questions which would be the same for a crosswalk. Um, and what was highlighted is that there wasn't necessarily at this point enthusiasm for the dock, but great enthusiasm to see something on the beach house building, uh, there. And just having that as a, rather than a gray space, but having something really vibrant and working with the artist community. And in the event that there are, uh, problems with the paint or if people decide to add their own renditions to it, what is their thoughts about how to mediate that as we go into the summer?
Yeah, so I've been involved in a number of, uh, Rainbow Crosswalks in a number of other communities. And part of the operational cost is if people decide that, uh, they want to have their own artistic impressions on there, that we can potentially take it back to the original state that it, that it was in. So operationally, we've got, uh, the paint, but set aside that if, uh, there is, um, anybody in the community that defaces or, or changes it, we can, we can put it back. So that's within the operational requirements. In terms of how far it was and, and how long it is, Roger can speak to that. Um, we're, our intention, we thought it was going to be completed last week. Uh, that didn't fall through. We're expecting that it will be completed the end of next week. But that doesn't preclude council from, if it's not working, we can change that on the building itself, on that gray facing building. We can have the arts community come up with something to change what that looks like. And that's certainly something that council can direct staff to, to look into. The Rainbow, uh, dock is something very outside of the box. Uh, most communities have it on the ground. There are a lot of maintenance costs when it goes into a crosswalk where traffic is going across it. By being on a dock, there's much less traffic in terms of weight and what people put on it. So the, the maintenance costs are going to be substantially less than if we had it on the, on, on, on the paint on the ground. But like I say, that doesn't mean that we, we have to stop that. We can look at other options for council if that's what you said choose. And we're all going to have a chance to have a look at it as we celebrate it together on May 15th at noon. Um, and have that celebration and look at what are the other, some of the other options could be, uh, in the park.
And I think that that's what's important because change is a long conversation. Um, you know, maybe there's been something about, oh my gosh, is it natural? Cause people really resonate with the natural look about some of the photo, uh, photographs that are attached to it. So there were considerations that I hadn't thought of and I, I do have to apologize for that. One idea that did come forward, if it's, if there are some differing thoughts or if it doesn't match what we thought it was or achieve what we wanted it to achieve. Somebody came forward with the, with the idea of having dock lights on it. And the dock lights, um, could actually be utilized very similar to how communities use bridges. So for Orange Shirt Day, it could all be orange. Um, so for different celebrations, Canada Day, red and white. So there's a lot more versatility, which I thought was an interesting idea. So I'm excited to see what it's going to look like. I'm going to be enthusiastic to receive some of the, the input because I think that the diversity is important. Um, but also how people see a natural area. But there is a hundred percent endorsement, uh, for looking at an artistic impression on that building, like absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, further questions on the report?
I have one.
Uh, sorry, Counselor Bratton.
Um, just to further along with that, um, that those are some really great ideas. I think, um, with the art on a building and, and of that nature, we would have to probably get our bylaw, our art bylaw. Um, because it would all tie in together and we could make everything go with our strategic plan and all of that possibly. Anyways, but yes.
Okay, uh, go ahead to Mr. Johnson.
Thanks. So I know council's had a, a couple of reports in the last, uh, committee of the holes. And what the intention between the strategic plan and operational plan is to bring all of that together. So this report that you see from the C A O is something that we present to council quarterly along with all of the departmental reports. So it all comes at once. So if council's looking to, if a member of the public has an issue or a concern aboard where we're at with the project, that quarterly update will happen each quarter for council and you'll have all of the staff reports in, in one place. And it will make it certainly a lot easier. And I'd also just like to, to say thank you, uh, to the staff. Um, I've been working with the staff for, for a number of months, but, uh, um, I really feel the team, uh, is, is, is really coming together. Uh, we look at the, um, financial statements are done. I know our finance department has burned, burning the midnight oil to, to get that completed. Uh, we've got the financial plan done, the strategic plan. But that operational piece is something I'm really looking forward to bring to council because then you can see how everything comes together. And that's how we measure performance of the organization. Because we're going to come to you and say, here are the timelines that we can get these things done. And then that's what council will continue to look and make sure that we're reinforcing it. Like a couple of the things today that were brought up was that report in June that I'll be bringing about development. That should be in the operational plan. So you can say, oh yeah, that's when that's coming. So you don't have to spend that council time asking those questions. You'll have that complete picture about where we're going as an organization and I'm, I'm quite excited about that. And the, the final thing I wanted to just mention was under economic development. Uh, we have monies in grants set aside where we can hire somebody on a nine-month contract to pick up the economic development file. And that's something we definitely need to do. We've, uh, fallen behind in some of our grant reporting. Um, the economic development file's been on the, the corner of folks' desks and that's not appropriate. Uh, we need to make sure that we have the resources to get the things done and to complete the grants, uh, that we said that we were going to get done, um, within the timelines without asking for, uh, extensions.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Um, yeah, I know. And thank you for that. That was, uh, the, especially the last point that you made there on economic development. There's absolutely a need to, to get on with that. Um, there is, you know, I've been getting those inquiries. That was one of the inquiries from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, that was part of the discussion with Community Futures as well at the chamber meeting, um, and then previous discussions on that one. So, um, yes, uh, really, really do need to move on that one. But yes, thank you for that report for sure. Um, there is.
Just, just one other quick thing that I forgot to mention. Um, so while, you know, Mr. Carmichael has said that, that sweeping's taken a little bit longer. This is the first year we've done it this way. And of course, we had quite a lot of material from our previous contractor, which has extended the timeline for us to get this done. So you can see as we gain the experience, we have a better understanding of how these fit together. Now, why is this important? Because as soon as street sweeping's done, in the beginning of June, we've got the line contractor coming in place to do line painting. So people will see their streets being cleaned and then they'll see the paint going into the ground. And that's what people want to see is how are we moving forward with the improvements? It's hard for people to get their head around at times about sewer and water with pipes under the ground. And that thing that they can see is that we're making improvements, like the mayor had said with tell us being around the community. People don't notice when people are working on the lines, uh, the, the, the transmission lines. They also see when, uh, the, uh, road markings go down. And, uh, they're doing a great job of seamlessly trying to bring that all together. Versus when Mr. Carmichael first started, you know, everything was sort of in flux and things were a little bit late. We're ahead of the game this time, of which I, I appreciate the, the job that staff are doing. Um, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, uh, watching the level of street cleaning, you can, it also exposes what we actually need to do, which is also mentioned in Mr. Carmichael's report in your comments as well, uh, which is ditching in other types of, um, you know, edging on those roads as well. Counselor Sim had another question?
I did, just in regards to the operational plan, which I'm really looking forward to. Because one of the challenges that I'm finding in, in looking for information is how people can, can look to see what we're doing. So having those, those reports come in and having timelines where it's easy to access. So recognizing that we have changed to a committee of the whole. Um, how do you find the information that's there? So if you're a developer, you would say, what's going on with sort of some of the development applications? Or what's going on with, you know, some of the discussions around infrastructure and all of those? How do we convey that more effectively out to the public? And ideally this work plan is going to, to direct that and, uh, make us more transparent to the public.
Yeah, and it's going to have a dashboard that shows if a project is on, we're on timeline, we're meeting expectations, it's going to be green. If it's yellow, it means we've experienced some bumps along the way. There's some problems with this project's getting completed. Or it's red, uh, we're behind and what are the reasons for that? And we have to justify that to council. Because if we've said we could do something by June and we haven't done that, then we expect council to hold our feet to the fire because this is what we said we could get it to you for. And then that becomes the performance matrix that we've got for all of our staff. Because in the operational plan, I don't say to council, when do you want to see this happen? I go to staff and say, with your capacity box and what you have, what are the timelines that you can get this done? Do not be aspirational. What I want you to be is practical. When can you get this done? So that when council looks at the list and goes, oh my gosh, June, I wasn't expecting that in June. I was expecting that in May. We can retailer the operational plan to move that up in priority and move something down in sequence of priority as well. So what we would do is in the committee of the whole, which would allow us more time to talk about those issues, um, and go over the operational plan. That's where we'd be putting the inquiries to. So if a developer wanted to know similarly with what the fire chief has done, you see the two 2023, uh, run counts in the 2024. We're going to have the same thing with building permits. We're going to have the same thing with rezonings. So you can see year over year where are we at? Are we ahead of where we were before or are we behind? So you can see all of those trends. And what I want to be able to do in the operational plan is outline for you, what are the trends that we've seen in this quarter? So what you see in my staff report here is there's an issue on staffing. And that should always be one of the forefront things that comes in the public report. Have we had any departures? Right? Uh, have we gone out for any recruitment? Who's been selected for those positions? That should all be on a public agenda so that council can see, as well as the public can see, what's changed in the organization. So that whole comprehensive report, to me, I think will address a lot of council's concerns about, hey, where's this project at? Where's that at? Because you're going to have it in one complete picture. And quite frankly, that's how we're going to look at performance measurements for our staff. Did you achieve what you said you were going to achieve? And that's how people will move through, uh, their salary increments is that they achieve the things that they said that they were going to do. So therefore, uh, we can also reinforce, if you didn't achieve the things that you're going to do, then that's also reflected, uh, in your salary. So, uh, it's a whole piece that comes together. It's a whole culmination of a whole bunch of things. And I'm really looking forward to presenting that to council because I think it's going to give you the transparency and metrics that you've been looking for.
Am I right in also understanding that that will place mark when our managers and directors, uh, know that they will be responsible for reporting? So I thought that, for example, Mr. Carmichael's report on, was excellent. It was so thorough. There was a lot of detail and there was, you know, timeframes attached to it. And with this work plan, is that the type of measurement that you're, that council can expect?
100%. You're going to see all, all of the departmental reports in conjunction with the ops plan, the strategic plan, all in one piece. And we're really working towards fixing the agenda process. Um, I don't think the agenda process is smooth at the moment. You'll get agendas that are released sometimes late on a Friday, sometimes early on a Saturday. That's not that, um, Mr. Prime isn't doing his job. He absolutely is. Our problem is we haven't been following up on deadlines. Reports need to be in by Wednesday so that they can be there, so that I can speak to them at the agenda setting review. And reports that come in after that are going to have to be delayed. We've not allowed enough time for us to internally review and provide rigor to these reports. And what you'll start seeing is on all staff reports, you'll see the sign off of the C A O. Any staff report that has a financial component must also be signed off by the CFO. So we're getting much more transparent in terms of council, yes, we've looked at all the options of this report. Therefore it's signed off and we're presenting it to you as an organization. So it's one of the things that I talked about in the report is fixing the agenda process. And really it's just about setting realistic achievements and timelines. And also as to answer your question, Counselor Sim, we will have, when you can expect to see the quarterly report, March, June, those dates will be well in advance so that you can see that. And then what happens if something comes up from council and you want us to start exploring something else? That gets put over to the strategic plan so that we can look what comes off the list. Because what we're trying to do in the operational plan is fit about 60% of our capacity and then have 40% for flux. Meaning we should be able to jump to the pump for certain things. But at times, if it's a very complicated matter, it might mean that we have to adjust timeline somewhere in the operational plan. I think it'll be a lot clearer when you see all of the reports together. And I'm really looking forward to presenting that to council in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, that was a fantastic explanation. Okay, drink of water and breathe. Um, moving on to new business, uh, 17.1 Fire Smart Community Funding and Supports Grant Application. Um, there is a recommendation that council support, support the submission of an application to the U B C M Community Resiliency Fund for the Fire Smart Community Funding and supports stream to the amount of $390,000 in the district. Uh, staff will probably override overall management of the grant. Uh, Mr. Smith, are you going to speak to this at all or is this, this is, we just need to do this?
We've submitted the, the application. We're looking for the resolution. This was built into the business case for the, when we did the budgeting for this year, so.
That's what I thought. I just want to clarify for the public.
Just if, if council had any more.
Questions.
Questions on it.
Yeah. You, uh, Counselor Frizzle has one.
Um, how long do you think it'll be before you hear? I think I asked you this before, but.
Uh, the timeline they've, they give in their application is 120 days. So it's been three weeks, so. I'm hoping sooner than later, but yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, any further questions? If not, I need a mover and a second or on the resolution. Uh, moved by Counselor Frizzle, seconded by, was that Counselor Sim? Did you second that? Okay, there we go. Seconded by Counselor Sim. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, that passes. Thank you for the work on that. Uh, B City Renewal. So, uh, there is a staff report there. We want to speak to it all. It's, it's not a lot of money, um, but it is something that we signed up for, for a few years ago. And I believe we haven't been renewing our B City status.
So what you have in front of you is the B City renewal designation. Uh, the B City, um, um, communities are very serious about pollinators. And what it means is that we're careful of what we do. We have policies and practices within the District of Clearwater, um, in using pesticides and things like that to, um, help the pollinators continue their long life. Um, in 2019, the District of Clearwater became a B City. We're one of eight in B C. I, I noticed that there were quite a few back east, not so many in British Columbia. And it's with the partnership and cooperation with the Clearwater Bee Club and Yellowhead Community Services Food Security Program. And if you look at the application, there is quite a bit of detail that, uh, we need to complete that B City, um, designation.
Okay, I'm just realizing I probably should have stepped out on this for conflict, having a spouse that's part of that program. Anyways, um, I, maybe I just won't vote on it. There you go. Wouldn't matter anyways. Uh, so there is a recommendation. Any questions? Uh, Counselor Sim?
No, I'll just move option one. And should we ever move forward with the, um, mural? Gosh, I just see bees. And just acknowledging the fact that to be one of eight is pretty terrific. Um, and that to really highlight that as, as a strength of our community. And to thanks to the number of people who do participate and definitely to Rotary who was also supporting that. So motion to move option one.
A second or on that? Uh, second of us. Uh, any comments or questions further to that? If not, all those in favor. Thank you. And that passes. Uh, moving on to bylaws, uh, 18.1, and I'm quite sure there will be a staff report on this one, so.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today we are having in front of us the tax rate bylaw. The tax rate bylaw is a legislative requirement and it has to be filed by May 15th or prior to May 15th, but after the financial plan bylaw. As we were talking processes today, uh, we have, let me just see if there's another one. We have a series of financial plan processes. Um, it all starts with a strategic plan that is developed by council. We go into a five-year financial plan process. Uh, near the end of the year, uh, around November, we talk about the water user fees and the sewer user fees. We've just adopted the audited financial statements today. From here, we'll go into the property tax bylaw and into the property taxation, um, cycle. The property taxation cycle starts from about April to calculating the property taxes up to September and to the, uh, oh, this year it's actually October. Um, the first Monday in October is the tax sale. That's the end of the cycle. Yeah. So, and then we have, we start. So and then we have, we start over again, we go into permissive tax exemptions and grant aid and the cycle continues. You have in front of you um, the resolutions of council. I'll just read them. So you have top of mind that the District of Clearwater twenty twenty-four annual tax rates bylaw number three hundred twenty twenty-four be introduced and read a first and second time and also a third time. So when we're building the municipal tax uh bylaw and financials, we take several considerations. The first consideration is the property tax assessments by class. The average assessment by for residential class fell about nine percent. So the average home in the District of Clearwater is four hundred and six thousand dollars. However, the average uh business class is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The property tax requirement for the, as per the financial plan in twenty twenty-four, the district needs to raise about three point three million dollars. This is about eleven and a half percent over the prior year. The calculations also take into consideration non-market changes in property values or property uh units. So in the District of Clearwater, we experienced a utility units increasing significantly. And as a result of the utility units, the the T M X units increasing, it's sharing part of the burden. So as a result of that, the burden to the residential will be about five percent. And the residential for municipal tax, average, average residential will pay about one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the the business other class will pay about four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This slide demonstrates um the impact of non-market changes. In call, the far right column, you see the twenty twenty-three percentages of uh property tax paid by property class. In twenty twenty-three, the residential paid about fifty-one percent. In twenty twenty-four, they'll pay forty-eight percent. In the utility class in twenty-three, they paid twenty-seven percent. And in in uh twenty twenty-four, they will pay thirty-two percent of the of the um tax burden. And lastly, the business other will pay about twenty percent, where in twenty twenty-three it was about two percent. So where are the talks, what are my, what are our talk tax dollars paying for? This is a slide that shows what the tax dollars are paying for. It will, for an average residential property, the average residential property will pay about a hundred and fifteen dollars per month. And you see on the far right is your roads and fleet costs. That's about thirty-six dollars a month. The average residential will pay for roads and fleet. This year, I, in developing this slide, I took out all the cap, the uh capital reserve dollars and showed it separately, and that's the, that's the uh bar right next to the road. So we're putting about nineteen dollars every month away. Cover and followed by general government, uh, recreation and parks. Emergency suppo- emergency programs, about ten dollars. Fiscal services is about five and the rest. Recreation, I'm going to just, recreation, culture and events is three, transit is two, community development is two. Economic development is two, capital projects. We we funded just the fifty-seven thousand dollars uh worth of capital projects. Two and bylaws and inspections are two. So the top, I'm going to say the top five, our roads is thirty-six. Uh, capital reserves are putting money into savings is nineteen, general government is seventeen. Um, recreation and parks, that's uh the North Thompson Sportsplex is fifteen, fire and emergency programs is ten. And then the rest.
So I just want to clarify for anybody who's listening, one of the things that's for me, and I think for the rest of council, really important is the fact that we are, we are taxation is being uh extended to save for the future.
Yes.
And I think that that's really important, like we can't go on, that we actually have to be forward thinking that this this budget addresses that.
Yes. So this slide demonstrates the various um requisitions we receive from other taxing authorities. So we receive requisitions from the school, the T N R D, that um, the hospital, the policing, B C assessment and the municipal financing authorities. So we will gather um collect taxation from those authorities as well as from the municipal authorities. So what, I've put three years uh to show a trend here and and you can see from twenty-three, twenty-two to twenty-three, the other requisitions had an increase of about fifteen percent while the the municipal increase was only seven percent. And then from twenty-three to twenty-four, we're seeing a change of about five percent on their other requisitions. And the municipal, we're seeing about, it's eleven and a half, but twelve percent. But it actually comes out over the two years, everybody is charging about eighteen, nineteen percent increase over two years. And I apologize that this is little bit small for you probably to see. However, this is the requisition or the breakdown of the typical tax tax bill. The uh the the pie chart on your right, I'm going to focus on that, that is your average residential uh family. They will pay in total about two thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Of that, we talked about that it would be um about thirteen hundred dollars in uh municipal tax and about six hundred dollars in school tax. And uh for the North Thompson Regional District, it's um, or Thompson Regional was three hundred dollars. Um, on the pie chart on your right. On your, and then following, the the average business or the business other, um, it's on my right? Okay, yeah. The um you know what, I can't even see that myself. It's forty, yeah, four thousand seven hundred is municipal um portion and one thousand uh five hundred and twenty-eight is the school portion and the T N R D is six, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. So um, that is the breakdown of what our residents will possibly see on their tax bill if we pass this bylaw today. So today, we're, we're looking for three readings. Um, and then following that, we are looking for a uh uh, an adoption and we're setting that for Friday. And after that happens, then we will uh complete our legislative reporting, which is due on May fourteenth. And also our internal reports and our external reports, which will go on our website um as well. And then we are hoping to fully implement Qustica in the night cycle, which starts May sixteenth. Uh, not quite like that, but yeah, we will fully implement the Qustica in June and the process begins over again.
I have a question.
Question, go ahead, uh, Counselor Bratton.
We're passing this on Friday, does that mean we have to have a meeting?
Yes.
We have not, I don't think we've received a meeting in light for that, but at what time was it scheduled that?
There's the doodle poll that was out for it and the uh most favorable time was five o'clock on Friday.
How does a doodle poll work? Wow, doodle poll work? Cause I don't ever get responded back what's decided.
Okay, and I'll make sure that goes out.
Okay.
So as long as we have, hopefully everybody can make for it uh for Friday, um, but if not, as long as we have quorum, that would be great. So Friday for a few minutes. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, continue or are we to the point where I get to read this? We need a resolution. Okay, uh, so we have two recommendations. Uh, the first one is the District of Clearwater twenty twenty-four annual tax rates bylaw number three hundred twenty twenty-four be introduced and read a first and second time. Somebody wish to move that. Moved by Counselor Matheson, seconder, Counselor Frizzle, discussion. Hearing none. Uh, I will read this, District of Clearwater. Two thousand twenty twenty-four annual tax rates bylaw number three hundred twenty twenty-four, a bylaw to establish twenty twenty-four annual tax rates. Whereas section uh, whereas pursuant to section one sixty-five of the community charter, council has prepared a five-year financial plan for the period of January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the five-year financial plan as presented has been considered and approved by council. And whereas it is necessary under section one ninety-seven of the community charter to establish tax rates to raise the revenue for municipal purposes identified in the year twenty twenty-four of the five-year financial plan. And whereas to meet its taxation obligation in relation to other local governments or public bodies, certain amounts are to be collected for the year twenty twenty-four by means of rates established by the District of Clearwater. Now therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in open meeting assembles and acts as follows, this bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater twenty twenty-four annual tax rates bylaw number three hundred twenty twenty-four. All those in favor? And that passes. And then the second recommendation to read through a third time, can I get a mover and a second on that? Moved by Counselor uh Frizzle, seconded by Counselor Bratton. District of Clearwater twenty twenty-four annual tax rates bylaw number three hundred, a bylaw to establish twenty twenty-four annual tax rates. Whereas pursuant to section one sixty-five of the community charter, council has prepared a five-year financial plan for the period of January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the five-year financial plan as presented has been considered and approved by council. And whereas it is necessary under section one ninety-seven of the community charter to establish tax rates to raise the revenue for the purpose, municipal purposes identified in the year twenty twenty-four of the five-year financial plan. And whereas to meet its taxing obligation in relation to other local governments or public bodies, certain amounts are to be collected for the twenty twenty-four year by means of rates established by the District of Clearwater. Uh, now therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in open meeting assembles and acts as follows, this bylaw may be cited as a District of Clearwater twenty twenty-four annual tax rates bylaw number three hundred twenty twenty-four. All those in favor? Thank you, and that passes. And we do have some correspondence. Uh, item nineteen point one, I see the proponent is actually in the room. So there's a la- a letter for a request for support for um a new taxi company with a few extra other services there. Do you want to speak to this at all or do you care? You're good, okay. I I think, I I think, I think he's done the, he's presented quite a good letter here. What is the feeling of council on this? Do we want to submit a letter of support on this? Write a letter for, yeah, Counselor Sim.
Yeah, I I think it's important to do. I mean, I I feel that after reading some of the criteria of what a local taxi, you know, should have, it's out of step with the distances that are involved in the time. So certainly having additional service would be of value to our community. Um, I know that there's a number of social opportunities where people would like to get out more. Um, but lack of uh transportation, whether that be transit or um, you know, enough uh private business, it's it's an imperative for us, an absolute imperative.
Hundred percent agree. Uh, further questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Frizzle.
How many um taxis do you foresee having? How many taxi cabs will you have to start?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just to that, I think that that's why, you know, uh, council support this is to really, you know, let the, you know, the powers that be know that supplemental service is an imperative.
Yeah.
Um, and that's what this is. It is, it is an imperative.
Um, are you going to make the motion that we write a letter in support of that, Counselor Sim?
So moved.
Okay, seconder on that, please. Yes, seconded by Counselor Matheson, all those in favor? Yes, thank you. Uh, I hope, look, hope you all the success and then look forward to a response from uh the the commission. Good luck with this. Yes, thank you. Uh, there is a second, or there, sorry, there are two other correspondence information only letters, one from Minister Kudo. Or sorry, M P Kudo, he actually has reached out in the last couple of days. Um, and I don't have a date on it, but he would like to come meet um with anybody up this valley. Including council, if so be, but I'll, I'll reach out and find where the schedule is for that, if council is interested, so. Um, but I'll find a date so that we can figure out when he'll be in town anyways. Uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Prime.
And and the date we did receive was May fifteenth at ten thirty.
Okay, so May fifteenth, okay.
So that date is the same day that's proposed for the uh doc. So do we have some itineraries? And again, for me, and I don't want to speak for other members of council, but getting uh longer timelines would be really important, like this is a week turnaround and everybody here has.
A little bit of this is actually my fault because um I was, the question was put to me, um, who, do you want to respond to this? Cause it was a political uh request. Um, and I should have sent out a note out to council on Friday when I did get this, so this one is actually a bit on me.
That's okay. I think as we, as we strengthen the organization, just having uh just timelines and I, that's, that's all I'm suggesting and oh, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, if you. Yeah. In the future, I I did, I did send this uh to the mayor and said, would you like to handle this or me? So I'll put myself in that same category that in the future I will make sure that I C C the rest of council as well. Uh, so that we're not, you know, all bunched up with dates. And the other thing I just wanted to mention too is I need a little bit of help from council, just in terms of my schedule for some of the community events that are coming up. I'm certainly planning to be there for the May Day Parade, um, but other things that are happening, please let me know so that I can amend my schedule and make sure that I'm supporting you, whether it's to your seniors groups or whomever else that you feel that the C A O position needs to be raised to.
Thank you, yes, keep that in mind. Um, yes, and I will respond to Mr. Uh Kudo's office today. Uh, I I will definitely make that time for that because I'm already going to be occupied going to the doc thing at noon, so. Uh, but if anybody else can come along at at ten thirty, depending on whether or not his schedule changes or not, so. Um, and there also is a second letter uh that was added to the agenda, uh twenty point two, from Mr. Rotzetter. Um, if anybody would like to comment on that or it's now part of the agenda.
No, I just wanted to see it as part of the agenda, no response required.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, there are no notices of motion. Questions from the public? Annabelle? No, 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 this, sorry, this is just a one-time thing that generally happens. It has specific to do with the audit, um, that, and yeah. At the end, yeah, no, this is, this is specific for this type of meeting that we had today, um, comes up probably once a year and there's other ways of handling it, but this is the way we handled it this year. Okay, any further questions?
I did just want to have one clarity, uh, in regards to the um motion to accept uh the correspondence, is no, no action required because it seems it's being handled by?
Yes, well, it's information only.
Information only, that's I just.
Yeah, there is no, there's no response required, yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, no other further questions? Uh, we've already done our own camera, motion to adjourn. By Counselor Frizzle. Do you second that?
Yeah.
This, so this one's a bit of a mystery to me. Um, T N R D, you just have to say motion to adjourn and you're done. You don't actually have to move it and second it. Well, you you move it, but you don't have to vote on it. Do we actually have to vote on it? Is that our understanding of this?
I think that the chair can just adjourn it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you, we're adjourned, thank you.